August twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty-two, it's a little after six o'clock. I apologize because I'm cost to be after six o'clock. We're in City Council Chambers, three forty-five High Street in Hamilton. We do have two public hearings this evening, one involving the Maple Avenue Corridor Plan, and as well as some amendments to our zoning ordinances. They'll be heard later on in the agenda. Let's start off with a roll call, please.
Mohler.
Present.
Pullman.
Present.
Fear.
Present.
Vaughn.
Present.
Ryan.
Here.
Nab.
Present.
Flower.
Present.
Okay. Let's start off by offering a prayer, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand if you are able. Almighty God, thank you for the organizations, the groups, the volunteers that make our city succeed. Watch over Ukraine and other countries where democracy is at peril. And guide and protect our military and public safety personnel who help protect our freedoms to live safely and peacefully. Amen.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Okay, we do have some special presentations, and I think most of them are in the back row. Come on up to the front row, folks, to this area here, if you would. If you're here for the Model T Ford Club Event Recognition, come on up.
How are you?
I'll be out here for a few. You should be okay.
Oh, my gosh. I'm so sorry. I'm glad to see you here. Hi, Cat.
Okay. I'm not sure if many of you had a chance, you had to have had a chance, to see Model T Fords driving all around Hamilton, Ohio, earlier, actually, it was in July, end of July. And there's special people here who made that happen, the location folks, history folks, the Model T folks, and they all got together and put on one heck of a presentation of history and things to do in Hamilton, Ohio. And because of that, we've got a proclamation. Let's start off with some photos first. And I want to thank the Millers for, that's the family, Model T Ford folks having fun there, Hamilton, Pullman at the Pullman Family Activity Complex. That's also an activity complex, I believe, Model T Ford, their drive-in, that's pretty cool. And that's Spooky Nook, of course, which hosted this event, Pinball Garage, Pinball Garage, eating doughnuts somewhere, that's always cool. And that's it. You know, it sounded like a Chamber of Commerce event because basically, the Millers and their organization got an event that showcased really our entire city and county, and where you took your tours to. And you folks just did an outstanding job. I'm going to read the proclamation, then have all of you principals speak about the event and what it meant to you, and then we'll go from there. Also, the mayor proclamation, whereas Hamilton City Council, City Administration, would like to give recognition and show appreciation to BJ and Casey Miller, and the local Model T Ford Clubs for their successful Model T tour and week-long special antique car event. Whereas in July of two thousand and twenty-two, Model T Ford Club International will help their sixth decade annual tour in Hamilton. And whereas the tour attracted over two hundred and thirty Model T Fords, over five hundred people from all over North America, attendees from all around the world. And whereas the event was to showcase Hamilton and Butler County, with Model T Ford Club International Tour being the largest large-scale gathering at Spooky Nook Champion Bill. Whereas the purpose of the event was to promote the history and preservation of Model T through driving, learning, and experiences. It was organized and planned by local chapters, knockin' Ts, and Bluegrass Backroad Ts. Whereas the organizers partnered with many groups, including Inside Out Art Studios in Hamilton, for all the awards for the event, Black County Visitors Bureau, Municipal Brew Works, Black County Historical Society, City of Hamilton, clubs, Henover Winery, Pinball Garage, Pullman Family Activity Complex, and other organizations in Butler County and surrounding areas. Whereas during the event, participants explored Hamilton and Butler County area every day with a tour book that gave turn-by-turn directions and places to visit. Whereas BJ and Casey Miller were the tour hosts, created an event which brought hundreds of thousands of dollars into the greater Hamilton area economy, and even more smiles to the community. Therefore, I, Pat Moore, Mayor of City of Hamilton, Ohio, whereas Hamilton City Council is hereby recognized, I'm going to pick these two folks out, and all of you deserve this credit, so kind of like your name's on here. BJ and Casey Miller, then you can introduce yourselves as if you were on here, for the leadership, vision, and success in bringing a special event to Hamilton, Ohio. So BJ and Casey, why don't you come up to the middle here, so I can give this to you? And, uh, good to hear your company. All right. Congratulations, and what an absolutely excellent event. And you can talk about the t-shirts, these folks had fun with Hamilton, fun with Model Ts. And, uh, and this what, what's neat about this is, and you're not allowed to talk, this is years of planning. So it was years of visiting restaurants and pubs and everything around Hamilton, Ohio, to prepare for this, to have maybe hundreds of thousands of dollars before the actual event. But thank you for bringing this to Hamilton. I'll let you folks talk first. Tell us what it meant to you, give these folks an idea, who maybe didn't know what was going on, what went on.
Well, we are planning it four years ago. And we've been receiving a lot of thank you cards here lately after the event. They really enjoyed having you at many of the events. They were very impressed.
I'm as old as the Model Ts.
And everybody commented on the Donut Trail, lots of events all week, and how wonderful all the food was. It was the first tour they'd been on with all good food, they said. They were commenting on how accepting and thoughtful that people in Hamilton were with cars and very welcoming. Yeah, by the way, it's great to...
Well, they, they had a fashion show, gloves, ice cream, Spooky Nook's first floor was packed. Now I got to be a judge, which is scary. Sean, you were too.
I was too.
It's always like that.
Yeah, it was great for us too. But the Miller family, I mean, we're an incredible family who helped put this together. They were dressed in period outfits as well, and just a lot of family fun, it really was. So I want to say thank you folks for doing this, because they went, they spent hours and hours and hours, and they're all volunteers. They're not paying people who put together this event, but they sure as heck could put together other events that's based upon your detail, and where you raised some donations to take care of the folks who came to town. It's incredible, absolutely incredible. Now let's go to the host folks, our location, Spooky Nook. Okay, who's going to be speaking for Spooky Nook? Introduce yourselves.
Hi, I'm Jim Lohner, I'm the president of Spooky Nook Sports, and this is Scott Rogers, he's the general manager here in Ohio. So for us, I mean, obviously, this project has been years in the making, and this, this event itself was about half of the time that we spent, so it's been two or three years talking about Model T and probably five years. We're not where we want to be with the project, you know, we were hoping to be open several months ago, but to have this as our first big event in Hamilton was an honor, and it was, I don't want to say it blew our expectations out of the water, because that would mean that we didn't have high hopes for it, but it blew our expectations out of the water. Even with high hopes and the energy and the concept that it was, I think we were still blown away by what it ended up being. So thank you to the team here, and the folks from Model T, and then our team at, on the ground. I unfortunately wasn't here for the event, but Scott, and Lisa, and Catherine, and Kathy, and the rest of the team over at Spooky Nook did a great job of working with all we had to put on an event, so I'm proud of everybody, so thanks for having us.
Heard a lot of compliments out of Spooky Nook from BJ and the Visitors of Town. Compliment you folks. Now, Sean, and the Black County Visitors Bureau were actively involved in this, I think I saw Mark back there. Pictures.
For us, I mean, BJ and I started talking in May of two thousand and nineteen about what the possibilities could be, and then shortly after that, we went out to Spooky Nook and met with Jim, and went with Sam Byler and Mike Dollar, and started talking conceptually what this would look like. And I think for us, we've all talked about what Spooky Nook is going to mean from a sports perspective, and we're very excited about that. This shows what the other possibilities are of different types of events. And so to bring two hundred and thirty-nine Model Ts into Hamilton and all of Butler County and southwest Ohio in the region, and what that meant, and somewhere around seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars in total economic impact, it was a great, it was a great experience. But really, BJ and Casey and the group up here, they did a lot of the hard work in planning it, making sure that Hamilton and Butler County and Spooky Nook could be shown in a positive light, so thank you for letting me be part of it. Thank you.
Historical background, get the Creytons here, and who you folks were involved with this.
I'll just speak on behalf of the historical community of Butler County. We had over twenty-three different states come by the Historical Society on the day before the convention started. The people were so friendly. My volunteers made the comment that it's the nicest group that's ever come by and seen the Historical Society. And then my husband and I welcomed all two hundred and thirty-plus cars to our farm on Tuesday, and survived the Doughnut Trail, survived the car games out in our hayfield, and our hayfield, thank heaven, survived, and we will get a third cutting pay this year. But it was just a wonderful experience to be able to share the history of Butler County with so many of the people. They were very appreciative of what was done for them. I was very pleased at how well everything went, and just like I said, the reception of the various other historical places where they went to, to Chris Olman, and shooting at the monument for the pictures until it rained, and that was the end of that. But Mother Nature wasn't the kindest, but it was just a fabulous experience for everyone that I know, for the history community, and I'd love to see another one come back.
A couple worse, I think that's your vehicle that's on that t-shirt.
Yeah, it is for me, yeah.
Well, what I want to thank is the city, the county, everybody working together and tried to help us the best. And everybody got everything that they wanted, but that was okay. That was great. You showcased on an international-type scale. Pictures in the next magazine will show all things here in town. So that's all I have to say, is thanks to everybody. I mean, it wasn't just us, it was you guys saying, okay.
I also got to say, Councilmember Eric Pullman was actively involved in this in a lot of ways. The Kewer Room down here, we had you come down. I did join us a few months ago.
I'm not a very big person. I try, I can.
But, you know, yeah, we have, we met and talked and got things done, and I did introduce your other volunteers over here from your club. I met you folks a number of times over the last few months, and Eric did as well, but this was just an example of what can be done in our city. And I said, you should have seen this man's tour book, it was incredible. Almost by the hour, we're never going to be. Nobody got lost, there's no Model Ts out there anymore. But what a nice event, and mentioned economic impact, Sean, and that's incredible. Love doing that, and also having fun too. Having a round of applause for these folks here. All right. Where's your shirt? I have it, I have it in my own.
Thanks, thanks.
Thank you, kisses and love. Great job.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Take care. Thank you. Good job. Love the shirt. It's great. Like the earrings too, that's awesome. How you doing? I gotta say, I just got, how you doing? How you been? Pretty good. Still got, got your Tommy Mack card?
Yeah.
But you're in a funeral night.
Everyone wants to copy the mayor. He needs the pocket square though, like you do.
Every time I see those guys, it kills me, I sold my Model A, it just, just like, God, I want it back, but that's all right.
Okay, next on the agenda is the train depot relocation update.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, citizens of Hamilton. Unfortunately, the information I have to share tonight is the same information I shared two weeks ago at the council meeting. I have been pestering the CSX representative that's been assigned to work with us on this project daily to find out what's going on with the review of the insurance for coon restoration. As of late today, just before this meeting tonight, they informed me that they still not heard any more information from them. So until, again, once we get the coon restoration on site to begin the work bracing the windows and door openings, we can't proceed with any of the work. So I am hopeful that in the next day or two that we get that information so that they can get started next week. I've talked to Coon Restoration, they are ready, they are ready to go immediately upon approval, but again, until we get through the bureaucracy of CSX, we can't move forward with it. Are there any questions?
Just keep us informed and keep sharpening your pencil.
Mr. Mayor.
Please.
Okay, just one, so do we have an estimate? Are we months away, weeks, days?
As far as getting started?
Yeah, I mean, the total move was supposed to be...
Well, the total move will probably take two months or so.
Okay.
From start to finish, but until we get started, I can't, I can't give you an end date, but I can't give you, until I get a start date, I can't give you an end date.
Okay.
Mayor. Yes, please.
Rich, is, are there any weather-related concerns? Let's say that they don't get final approval until September, by the time the bracing is done, it pushes it maybe into December. I mean, is there anything weather-related? I know the foundation is, the work is complete.
Correct. The only weather condition would be the installing of the cement block underneath the structure to support it, once they get the buildings moved over top of the foundation, and I talked to Lithco Restoration directly about that, and wondered if there had to be any additional heating or additional costs associated with that, and they said, no, they would use additional additives to the mortar to make sure that it cures properly. So they had no concern about weather, as long as we get it obviously done before, let's say, mid-December.
Thank you. Mayor. Assistant Mayor Nab.
Rich, in the hierarchy of CSX, and we've all seen some recent less than palatable outcomes of what CSX is doing in our community, we were granted until the end of July, I believe, or is it?
Actually, end of August.
End of August, okay. And as we push toward the end of August in another week, have, are there two teams talking to each other at CSX because of the insurance, and then also granting us the extension to get us into the fall, or how do we sit on that?
I was hopeful that we would have a more firm schedule that I could share with CSX once we get the start date established, but we have not had any other conversations with them about that date. There are members of CSX that are aware of what's going on with the insurance fiasco, but I don't know that we have a, we do not have a firm time extension yet.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor. Assistant Mayor Pullman.
So Rich, did they ever send back our purchase agreement?
They have not.
Okay, and that's since?
And I, I checked with them, I believe I mentioned it at the last meeting, I checked with them a couple of weeks ago, and they said it was still in process internally.
And that's since June second, right?
Yes, correct.
Mr. Mayor.
I just, I'm very, very frustrated, you cannot...
I think a lot of people are.
...gauge by my reactions here tonight.
Rich, when would the time be that it's too late to do anything? If this keeps going on with, as long as it's going to take to make the move, at what point is it too late to move and we have to wait?
I would say if we can't get started by the first of September, it's going to be very difficult to get it complete, because it's going to take a couple of weeks to do the bracing, plus the removal of the tin ceilings in both structures, and a few more days after that to get the intermediate building removed between the two historic structures, and then Wolf House Movers has estimated seven weeks to do the actual move from start to finish, from the start of the first building to the completion of the second building. And then it's probably going to take two to three weeks for the block layers to put the block up underneath the structures at the foundation.
Okay.
So I am concerned.
I could tell from the expression that you were, but I figured it would take, it's not going to, once you move it, it's not going to be done real quick, so.
Correct.
There's still a lot of work to be done, and weather, you don't know what the weather would be like. But I'm not telling you anything you don't already know, so thank you.
Welcome. Thanks for doing what you're doing.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Rich.
Good evening. Want to give you an update kind of on the overall beltline progress, and then some things to consider on the Phase Four construction as we go into budget season and start thinking about next year's budget. Here's just a recap on the overall phasing. Phase One, which was completed a couple of years ago between Cleveland Avenue and Eaton. Phase Two, just, we had a grand opening here this spring between Cleveland and North B Street. And Phase Three, which is in design along the river, along Spooky Nook, and then, which we'll speak to later as far as the property purchase. And then Phase Four is bullet number six, there's a portion of bullet number six there in the future phases in the blue to the west. Currently, we have Phase One completed, that lists the grants there. Phase Two, which was from Cleveland Avenue to Black Street, was completed under budget, and we had seven hundred and thirty-five thousand in grant funding towards that. We're able to reallocate that to a different phase of the trail, so the other phases are either completed or have all of, essentially, all of the grant funding that they can receive due to maximums. Generally, there's a fifteen to twenty percent local match that can't come from grants. So we're moving that unused portion of Phase Two to Phase Four. In addition to that, in Phase Four, we sought a state capital grant for one point five million, and the state was, we just, last week, found out that we're going to receive three hundred and seventy-two thousand towards that. So then, the decision is, what do we do with that three hundred and seventy-two thousand and the other remaining balance from Phase Two, because we can't build an entire section of trail. So this is kind of the close-up and the components, I'll say, of Phase Four. Phase Four goes from Eaton Avenue, where the existing Phase One ended near Flubs, all the way around to Main Street, and we accommodated for the crossing of Main Street with the main Eaton Serial Haldeman project. So we can do one of, a number of things here to complete, or to use up the grant funds. We can do the entire trail segment, but that would mean budgeting another eight hundred and sixty-nine thousand or so towards it. We could build just the bridge over the river, which is roughly half the cost of Phase Four. We could build the trail up to the bridge coming from the Main Street side, which would be a little wonky, but that's an option and something that people on the Main Street end and through Highland Park could use. And Phase Four, we could wait and seek additional grant funding and do it all at once. I would not recommend Phase Four, because with any delays to the project, waiting on grant funding, we have to seek extensions on the existing grants we have, and that could be problematic. The grants that are available, the very earliest would be delaying it approximately a year to a year and a half. OKI grants would be more like two to two and a half years.
What option do you suggest?
I personally, not speaking on behalf of the entire city staff, would go with going ahead and completing it, because I think if we build the bridge only, and there's no trail to it, it's just going to be so tempting to people. People are going to use the grass path, and it's pretty swampy as you get west of there. If we build the trail only, you know, it's just taking people up to a point, and it's kind of like a tease of, well, you can get this far, but you can't get across Two Mile Creek. But that is a significant number to come up with in the budget. I'm hopeful that Phase Four would come in under budget like Phase Two, but this is the estimate as it stands today. Are there any other questions? Thank you.
Can you send those options to all of Council? Separately from the rest of the agenda?
Yes, I'll send them out to you here later, Stephen.
Alan, before you leave, and it's important to know that the city, the people that we visit with on the trails are just in awe of what's been accomplished. So again, all the work, the compliment of what you shared tonight on the what-ifs and the scenarios and things like that, but importantly, when we're out walking and, and speedwalking and trying to run and stuff like that, you run into people, neighbors and friends that are on the trail, or people we don't even know, that say, this is really, really amazing. So again, to you and to the team that preceded you, that started this journey of, think back to Nick Barukas and his time and early on in the staging, and everybody else that's working on this, thank you.
Yeah, that's great to hear. I've, I've had very positive feedback on as well.
You bet.
Mr. Mayor. I do. I do have a question I should ask anyway, but on the eight hundred and sixty-nine thousand to complete it, Alan, the leftover is how much? How much would, do we have left over? Three hundred and seventy-seven thousand is what you said?
It's, I believe it's more like two hundred and seventy-seven thousand, then we have another three hundred and seventy-two thousand or so from a grant that we just received, that we're finishing the paperwork on now.
So we got close to six hundred and fifty thousand dollars sitting there on grants left over, right?
Yes.
And then, so the eight hundred and sixty-nine thousand, is that in addition to that, to complete it?
Yes.
Okay, it's not taking the six hundred, that'd be a lot easier decision.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, so we're looking at the six fifty plus the eight sixty-nine, okay?
Yes, and I, the, the most we could realistically expect to get on, towards that eight sixty-nine would be a five hundred thousand dollar Clean Ohio Trails grant, but Clean Ohio Trails may be getting beltline fatigue, because they funded a portion of the rideaway acquisition, a large portion of Phase One, and they, we have an application in now with them for Phase Three that I'm hopeful we'll receive as well.
The other thing is, if we do it now with the eight hundred and sixty-nine, that's in today's cost, not what is cost, or it's going to go up if we wait a year and a half.
Yes.
Okay, and we still may have a better chance to get a grant if we do it now, is what you're saying. We could, before they get exhausted, it's, is there a better chance by doing, getting a grant before, you know, doing it earlier?
No, the doing it early would be proceeding without any additional grants and just using the...
We wouldn't be able to get any more grants?
The, the two, there's actually a third one that was like for forty-six thousand to ODNR that we've applied for, and we'll find out if we get that. That one, we would, if we delayed things, we would probably have to just decline, because they, they have time constraints.
Okay, thanks. Thanks for calling that out. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we next go to audience of citizens, individuals who wish to make comments regarding items scheduled on the agenda. They speak during this part of the agenda, or may reserve the right to speak specifically when the item is up for a vote on council floor. All individuals who attend to address City Council are required to sign in at the table, the book in the table, which I have with me. Each speaker is allowed up to five minutes. Issues not on the agenda that are city-related may also be discussed at this time.
My name's Dan Hancock. I live at 67 Herman Avenue in Hamilton, Ohio. With some of the money that's left over from the portion of the trail, we need to paint the fence that you have there from Cleveland Avenue down to B Street. It's just sitting there, getting deteriorated, because it's the weather beating on it, and we need to paint it the same color as the dark brown that you have from Cleveland to Eaton Avenue to make it match and look uniform. So, like I said, that would be a good portion, to use some of that money to paint that railing there all the way down through there, and make it more beautiful than that and look uniform. The other thing is, you dug three big holes in Mark Avenue and that for gas main repair and that, and when they got done with the repairs and that, they took blacktop and dumped it in the hole. Now it's like going over three speed bumps. Your car hits the bumps and that, and I mean, they're not just a little bump, it's big bumps. Instead of rolling it over and smoothing it down, they just left it there, and it's bad, and I'm not the only one that's complaining about it. There's a bunch of the people in my area that are a little upset at how the road was left that way, instead of being made smooth like it normally usually, usually is. And then the third thing is, is the city of Middletown, well, before we get there, the homeless, there's homeless camping along the bike trail there, which one of the councilmen had seen it with me, and I had somebody camping along there. And also, you got people camping, if you go up Eden Park Drive behind Myers there, between Eden Park and Main Street, along where the gas line goes through there, the pipeline for the gas line, there's people camping out through there, homeless people. They got tents popped up. So, the thing is, Middletown has come up with an idea of getting buses to put the homeless people in, for men and women, and that, they'll hold up to 20 people, and they, if you have dogs, they can put the dogs in there, they have cages for them in the buses and that, and it'd be a nice thing to get the people out of tents and into something like that. So, you know, it'd be nice for the city to look, look into something like that, and it would help benefit the city and make it look more beautified, instead of having these tents pop up all over, even down Linda Wall there, camping down there by where the library was down there. So, like I said, it's not just one place, it's all over the city. So, it'd be nice if the city could do something like that, buy a couple of these buses and that, like Middletown's going to do.
Dan, I think a lot of us are taking down notes about painting the fences, the trail. The street, I'm sure that our street people are fully aware of that, they're shaking their head up and down. Where the homeless goes, there are multiple city groups and county groups are looking at that issue right now. Let some of their ideas be vetted, and we'll see what we can do. We know that there is an issue, but it's not just Hamilton, it's other cities, townships as well. So, we are, I'll tell you right now, we are actively working on that issue.
And, I thanks for the comment there about the park there and that, trying to push it forward there, I appreciate that, and like I said, you know, it'll benefit our kids in the city here.
That's on its own process.
Yep.
So we're working on that as well.
Yeah, I know. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you, Dan. Okay, next I have Jason, don't want to mispronounce your last name, but-
Adams.
Adams. Give us your name and your address, if you would, please.
My name's Jason Adams, I live at 237 Race Street here in Hamilton. And I live in the alley there. It's kind of a poor area, I live there by choice. You know, it's not like I have to live there, it's, I feel like charity there is better. You know, I'm able to help people out around the neighborhood. But, you know, when in a course of human events, it becomes necessary for one people to dissolve the political bands which have, connects them with another, and to assume them among the powers of the earth, the separate equal laws of nature, what God entitled them to, a decent respect to the opinions of mankind require that they should declare the causes which impel them to separate, to the separation. We hold these truths to be self-evident, that all men created equal, that they are endowed by God with the unalienable rights among these rights, our life, liberty, and pursuit of happiness. That to secure these rights, governments are instituted among men deriving their just powers from the consent of the governed, that whenever any form of government becomes destructive of these ends, it is undeniable right of the people to alter the, or abolish, and to institute new government laying its foundation on such principles and organizations, its power in such form as them shall seem most likely to affect their safety and happiness. Now, I want to ask you guys, does that mean anything to you guys?
We as a body here-
Yes, you as a body.
Work on city-related issues. You could probably tell from what preceded your time at the podium, and what will probably be after the podium, your visit, we're going to talk about city-related matters-
Well, this is city-related matters.
And I wish, I mean, yeah, let's get to the city-related matters, and then we'll give you an idea of what we can do, maybe help out, if not tonight, at a later date.
So this Public Health Preparing and this Bench Book here, you guys are lawyers, you know, I'm not. I'm actually a very uneducated man.
There's only one lawyer up here, and he's kind of uneducated too, I think, that's me.
Yeah, I mean, I'm kind of, I'm kind of an uneducated man on it, you know, but I've been studying law since, you know, I was 18 years old, been really, not been in school for it, don't have the money for the funds for it, because I'm a firm believer, if you can't pay for it, then you shouldn't, you shouldn't have it, you know, I'm a firm believer in that. So, and here, there's, have you read this, this law, it's by the Supreme Court?
And this is pertaining to what, related to the city?
Related to the city.
Yeah, tell me what-
It's the Public Health Authority.
Okay, okay.
Public Health Authority is going to go to every city, every county, everyone's going to get one of-
We've got a, we've got a health advisory board, we have a health director, so we do, we do follow Ohio law.
All right, I know you guys follow Ohio law, you know, that's what you're supposed to do.
Yeah.
But when it comes to a public health authority, where you let them go and kick everybody's doors in and take their stuff from, take them to detainment camps and send them to false trials, you know, rigged trials pretty much, because whatever their, it's the agency trial, whatever their truth is, or whatever they say is true, you have, you guys have to, the judge has to go by it, you know, that's Ohio Supreme Court ruling. You guys will, you know, really enforce that, because if you don't, they'll put you in the internment camp.
Well, we have got a municipal court that takes care of various issues and things that municipal court's got jurisdiction to hear. We've got administrative decision-making bodies in this particular city government, but what you're talking about as far as internment and all that, not happening in Hamilton, and it's not really related to, to what our city business is tonight, because-
Well, I know it's not tonight, but, you know, this, I just, just started reading into it, just started getting everything, because came here Wednesday, talked to you guys, I was letting you guys know, you know, our last Wednesday, I was telling you guys that, uh, this country's on the brink of war, and there's not going to avoid it, you know, it's, there's no offense or buts that's going to avoid it. And the problem starts right here in this room. Everybody, every, every person in this room, every person in this city should be aware of it, and it's just further and further getting ducked under the mat, because the media's wanting to throw little canaries out there for people to watch.
Everyone in this room right now, and I hope you're the same way, has a goal of making this city an even better city.
Exactly, I do.
That's what we're doing right now. Now, some of the comments you're making are not really related to what we're doing tonight.
I understand they're not related to what we're doing, but I'm just trying to bring it to attention.
We've got about 30 seconds left before we're going to bring up the next two people, so if you could kind of tie things into a, into a final comment or two, that would be great, and I can talk to you, not after this meeting, but we can sit down and talk sometime.
I'd like to sit down and talk with you sometime, if that's possible.
We will do that. Make sure you have my card.
All right, well-
Because, because the time is, is running out right now.
I know it's running out, just wanted to bring it to attention, you know, it's-
We're cool. All right, thank you, Jason. Here's my card. All right, we'll do it. Jim Lottman?
Good evening, Councilman Mayor.
Good evening.
And Josh?
Thank you, Jim.
Okay, yes, okay, well, um, okay, um, there's this, um, I live on Timber Hill Trail, or Timber Hill, Timber Hill Drive over on, off of Millville, and then back in the spring, it wasn't real bad, I mean, there were small potholes, may not run, and recently it's got some, potholes and big potholes too. They're not, the city, or the city road inspector ain't doing very good running at. I mean, I live there, I'm saying, but there's other streets like in a part of town too, not quite as bad, but still. The, um, the, um, city, or road inspector, the regular running spec, he doesn't.
I'll let you finish your comments.
I did.
Okay. Jim, we've, you're seeing a lot of paving and roadwork being done right now. I wish we had enough people, enough money to get every single street done this summer and fall, but we don't have that many people to get that done by this fall, we don't have enough money to get that done by this fall, but we are taking care of some of the most serious ones, where you don't want to have to reconstruct an entire street. Now, we've been very responsive, I think, to, to your suggestions. I know Rich writes down many, many things, and he attacks those issues that you bring up to us here at this council meeting.
I know, I do.
And I know, I know he wrote down Timber Hill, and I'm looking at Timber Hill right now on the sheet, and I'm going to write it down, so we're going to take a look at that, and then proceed from there.
Okay.
That sound fair?
Fine, it's, ground's great, I mean, I, but, um, how come the city, the road, road inspector don't inspect the roads like that, you know?
When I say that our, our street folks are busy, they really are busy right now. It usually seems to be every August and September, there's just a whole bunch of projects going on at the same time. City Council does get an email every day, almost of road closure for this, road closure for that, sometimes this underground utilities, but usually paving is involved, road repairs involved, so I, I hope when it turns to be like November, you're going to look around and say, hey, we got a lot of stuff done this fall, okay?
Hope so, I mean, one question too. Okay, how about Maple Avenue? Maple Avenue's still real bad, too.
Maple Avenue is actually on our agenda tonight to, to be discussed and voted upon, as far as a plan to make that just a, a much better street than what it is right now, have it become to its highest potential, we hope. So, we are, we are talking about Maple Avenue even tonight, okay?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Have a good night, Al.
You too.
I first want to discuss Maple Avenue, obviously. I own K and R Landscaping.
Yes.
I employ about 15, 15 guys, 15 to 17 people full-time. And just as of, I was back 2017 on conditional use, got it granted. Now, the, I guess you guys got new city zoning guys, now they want me to blacktop where my employees park. I can't, we discussed this back five years ago, I can't really blacktop it there, I got equipment that's just going to destroy it as soon as the blacktop goes down. Got 80,000 pound trucks going in and out, delivering on my bins that were approved. Then I hit, then I get the, then I put up a salt bin, did not get that, thinking that I needed to get that approved, because salt needs to stay dry. I have, I've already, like I said, back in 2017, I was, you know, we got bins approved, everything, I got the drawings, everything was discussed, and now they're wanting me to put up a blacktop and put, but there, where, where we put our trucks that go back and forth, and we have bobcats, I got front loaders, it's just going to destroy it. And I think the gentleman's name is AJ that's here, and we put up some, some stuff so nobody can see inside where we are. He comes in, makes a snotty comment, well, we could shut you down, there's not enough light coming in here. Well, it's not, I, I don't sell things here, no, it's not open to the public. I don't under, I just, I just don't understand why now, after five years, all of a sudden, I know you, you're trying to make Maple Avenue look great. I put $50,000 into the, the front of it.
Kevin, I remember you from Planning Commission, you and one of your men, I think, spoke-
Yes.
At Planning Commission.
Yes.
Were pleased, happy, and complimented you for developing Maple Avenue.
Right.
You and I talked, I think, maybe with Councilmember Pullman, at a funeral not too awful long ago.
Yes.
We talked about, you talking to the city manager, some other of our department folks, about what's going on on Maple Avenue.
And that's great, and I, and I'm glad that-
We expect to have that happen, but-
I did, I haven't did 100% of what was, what was there, I, I'll be the first to admit, I did 95% of it, I'm waiting on some trees, I just talked to Dave over, you know, he, he was at my building, you know, last week, because we have to decrease the amount that's there, there's way too many there, it's just not beneficial for, you know, for the growing conditions. But I just don't understand why now, after five years, that you guys are coming down on me, when I, I'm the best looking place on Maple Avenue. And it'll always be that way, and I don't, you know, I'm not going to, you know, yeah, there's other people out there that doesn't take care of their stuff, that's fine, that's not my problem, that's not my business. My business is my little area that I need to take care of. But I, you know, I just think we need to discuss and maybe make, you know, an exemption that I can't blacktop that, it's going to be destroyed.
I would say this might not be the best venue to go over the issues that you've all mentioned.
Right.
But you, you have made Maple Avenue, you've approved Maple Avenue by being there.
I've had so many-
You hired people.
Right.
We've talked about a few of these, we even talked about things you just listed, but we talked about having a meeting, your business on Maple Avenue, let's let that meeting take place.
Okay.
And then just kind of go from there, is that okay, Mr. Speaker?
Yeah, I mean, I would like to sit down with the city manager, and then maybe potentially you.
I think that might be a way to present this in a better venue.
Oh, absolutely, I would like to bring Liz, the conditional use permit, Tom Van Horst, myself, to that meeting, but yeah, this is the first I've heard of this, so I apologize. No, that's okay, that's why I'm here, to address the concerns and get it, get it fixed, so. All right, thank you.
How do you, how do you suggest setting up that meeting?
I don't know if I want to go that far, I don't know if you need, want to talk to Kyle, but it does, you know, I don't want it to go that way, I prefer not to, I just, I want to get it resolved, I just want, you know, some things that you guys are asking for is like totally, like-
I, I think we can have just a, a sit-down just with us and you, and we can just go through these issues.
Okay, that'd be great.
Let the process see, let's see how the process works.
Yes, that'd be great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, can we-
Councilmember Pullman.
Can we get, Kevin, can we get your last name and the address where you're at?
Yeah, if you would.
611 Maple.
And what's your last name?
Marino, M-A-R-I-N-O.
Thank you.
Yes.
All right, that takes care of all of the individuals who signed the Audience of Citizens Book. There are other folks that are up there for signature, but I'm not sure if that's for the, anybody who's signed the public hearing books. We now go to the consent agenda, that, that includes all staff reports, caucus reports, and informational reports about June 2022 financial report, and the July 22 financial report, as long as their respective investment reports. We're going to go into the committee of the whole, so council may ask questions, and hear comments, and some verbal reports about what's on the caucus agenda, is there a motion that the regular meeting be recessed, and the committee of the whole take place?
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Fear, seconded by Councilmember Vaughn. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Hearing none, that motion is carried at 6:52. Mr. City Clerk, will you lead us through the committee of the whole, the caucus agenda?
Absolutely, I'll be the first to presentations for this committee of the whole. Good evening, Mayor, members of council, members of the public. The first two items on our agenda deal with street and alley vacation petitions. So, item number one is petition to vacate a portion of Safe Avenue, this is, and this is outlined in red on this location map here on the screen. So this is a unimproved or unpaved, platted street, and the city is actually the applicant for this item. You, this was a caucus report that came to City Council not too long ago, it has been vetted through the Planning Commission on their August 4, 2022 meeting, and they recommended adopting the necessary legislation, ideally an ordinance, along with the conditions of approval. These are simple conditions, meaning that any improvements are approved by the city, as well as going through the city's process allows us to more expedite this process for the economic, the economic development project that's happening with Third Eye Brewing. So that being said, there's no objections from the Interdepartmental Review Committee, and if vacated, this portion of Safe Avenue would go to the abutting property owner, soon to be Third Eye Brewery. Do we have any questions on this caucus report?
None.
Okay. Item number two is petition to vacate a portion of South 11th Street Alley, outlined here in red on this map on the screen. So this is a, okay, so this is a unimproved alley as well, this is in response to nuisance abatement with neighbors and trash invagrants on this property. The history of this property is that it has not been maintained that well, and there's a history of the Resident Services Department, as well as Hamilton Police Department having to deal with trash and vagrant camp complaint on this property. So this request deals with deterring at this issue from reoccurring. If vacated, it would be split up equally amongst all abutting property owners. And so this is a petition that's going to be forwarded to the- So this request deals with, uh, deterring at this issue from reoccurring, uh, if vacated, it would be split up equally amongst all abutting property owners. And so this is a petition that's going to be forwarded to the planning commission, meaning you will be able to, to see this again in the near future. Uh, so recommendation is that you forward it to the planning commission for review, a public hearing, and recommendation. Do we have any questions on this item?
Any questions? Thank you.
Okay. Uh, next up will be a Jody Gunderson of the Economic Development Department, uh, dealing with the enterprise zone tax abatement for eight fifty South Erie Boulevard.
Mayor, city council, um, over the last several months, the, uh, city staff have been working with Eight Fifty Associates LLC, which would be the owner of Eight Fifty South Erie Boulevard, the old or former Pepsi plant, um, to, uh, work through the redevelopment of that project. What's notable about that particular project was that building was on the verge of, uh, being part of our demolition, so this is, uh, something that was, uh, uh, very concerning at the time, um, and to have a developer come along and take on this project was extremely gratifying. What the, uh, developer of the project is asking from the city is to enter into an enterprise zone, um, development agreement. Um, staff is recommending that it be seventy-five percent for ten years, and that would be the abated value of anything above and beyond what the current value is. Give you an idea of the magnitude of the project, uh, this is about a little over three million dollar project. Um, it, uh, about a million of that would be subject to, uh, the enterprise zone, uh, application, there's quite a bit of, of work that's being done and equipment that's part of that number as well. The tenant for the building is Third Eye Brewing, they will have six, uh, full-time employees and twenty-five part-time employees with a, um, app, with a payroll going up to third year of almost a million dollars. One thing that I did want to, uh, point about, out about this particular tenant for this building was that they, uh, currently operate from a facility in Sharonville, this is really an expansion for them, and why they really wanted to expand and took, take a part of this opportunity was they wanted to get more into production for export so that they could broaden their territory or their trade area. Um, so this building, once completed, will give them the opportunity to have the space to do that. I guess at this point, um, I, I just ask for your consideration of this project, and, if you have any questions, um, please let me know.
Questions? Thank you, Julie.
Thank you.
Uh, next up for item number four, deals with tax increment financing for the three hundred block of Main Street, that'll be done by our executive director of external services, Tom Vanderhorst.
Evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. This evening, I want to present to you another exciting development project, this is, um, I'm sure it feels like it's repetitive, we've come back a couple of times with this project, and I just wanted to kind of get through the, the process that we're going through here to, um, explain to you where we're at. This is for the Rossville Flats project in the three hundred block of Main Street, and tonight we're doing the item at the bottom, which is the, uh, vote on the TIF legislation. So, so far, at the end of last year, we did a fifteen-year CRA on this, which allows the developer to have a tax abatement for the first fifteen years. January twenty-seventh, our school board, who's our, one of our development partners in this, they passed a revenue sharing agreement, um, as part of this TIF for years sixteen through thirty. So this is the area located within the tax increment financing area, um, I'm sure all of you are familiar with it, um, couple of items on it, you'll see on the, uh, corner of E and Main up there, which is the westernmost part of this, uh, that's going to be a, a outlot that's not involved in the, uh, apartment, but it's going to be a freestanding restaurant, and you see some parking areas, which are some of the commitments that we made through the planning commission process, uh, over at twenty-four thirty, uh, North D, and also the partial lot on the backside of Park Avenue, which is the separate one across the alley. So the project description, um, spoke to the developer yesterday, which is one of the principals that was involved with the Markham, uh, it's a twelve million dollar mixed-use building, so the costs have continued to escalate during the, uh, building process, which is one of the reasons why these sort of incentives are so desirable. It's a seventy-six, um, unit, one-bedroom, market rate apartments, twenty-four hundred square feet of commercial space, anticipated rental rates about thirteen hundred a month. The same developer just finished a project over in Lebanon, and he's getting anywhere between thirteen hundred, twenty-five hundred dollars a month, uh, whether it's a one or two-bedroom, so he's pretty excited about this one. And also a freestanding restaurant, which is a tenant to be announced in at westernmost portion that I was telling you about. This is the, uh, elevations, this is from the approved plan, so this is what you will get, or, or very close to it, um, so you can see it's a really nice product. So again, the incentive structure, so years one through fifteen, there's a CRA which, uh, council passed back in December, uh, the second portion of it, which is, uh, what we're voting on, uh, in the, uh, next, well, meeting after next, is sixteen through twenty-two years is a, again, it's going to act a lot like an abatement to the developer where they get the taxes rebated back to them, and I think what's important is down on the bottom, uh, with negotiations with the school board, you can see in years twenty-three through thirty, those revenues are split between the schools, the, uh, Hamilton City Schools and Butler Tech, and roughly, you know, about two million dollars is going to come to the school district in a way of additional property taxes because of this project in years twenty-three through thirty, and Butler Tech is going to get about another hundred and five thousand. And it's a lot of stuff, I mean, if you have any questions, please feel free to ask me.
All right, thank you.
Next up for items five through eight, we'll have our director of engineering, Rich Engel.
Good evening, Mayor, council, citizens of Hamilton. At that time of year, again, when we bring our requests to apply for grant and loan funding from the Ohio Public Works Commission, we are a member of the District Ten Committee, and so we submit our applications there to be vetted first before it goes on to, uh, Columbus. We're not sure what the loan amount is going to be this year, but we're submitting three different water main projects. First, I'm going to talk about the, um, grant application. If you recall, the last two years, we submitted grant applications for water main replacement projects due to the condition of the water fund, and so next year, we're submitting back for resurfacing so that we can get back, started on, uh, putting pavement down on our city streets. The grant application is for one million, one hundred and thirty thousand dollars. We have a tentative list of streets under consideration, we have more streets there than we may get funding for, but we want to, obviously want to use as much in all of the OPWC grant amount, uh, that we get, uh, it's two-point-nine centerline miles. The project funding will include Ohio Public Works Committee grant, street levy funding, the Fund Three Eleven infrastructure renewal, stormwater funding, and then special assessments. List of streets include William Ave, Williams Avenue, and I'm going to go to our aerial while, um, go through this list of streets. So Williams Avenue between Pleasant and River Road, Fairview Avenue between Pleasant Avenue and River Road, Freeman Avenue between Williams and Fairview, Front Street between Pershing and Sycamore, Northwest Washington Boulevard between Eaton Avenue and Cleveland Avenue, and you all probably recognize these streets of being in poor condition, so I think we'll, I'll be pleased to get them done if we can get funding for them. Also, New London Road between Ross, Ross Hanover Road and Hogan Drive, and then the subdivision south of Columbia Road that includes Ridgefield Road, Meadowwood Way, and Cardome Drive. So that's our proposed list of streets for next year using the, um, OPWC grant application. You have any questions on the list?
Did you say Fair Avenue? Did you say Fair Avenue?
Pardon me?
Did you say Fair Avenue?
I did not.
Okay, I was just...
It was...
My fault, I just heard wrong.
It was Freeman.
Freeman.
It was in the, it's in Lindenwald.
Yes.
Again, we like to collect streets together as much as possible when we bid these projects so that we get optimum prices from contractors.
How many centerline miles do we have in Hamilton?
Two hundred and fifty-four, roughly. And then here's our, uh, proposed loan application, it's a zero percent loan, thirty-year term. Our first one we want to talk about is the Millville Avenue Water Main Replacement Project, it's a two-point-four million dollar project for the water main. Sorry. We have a, uh, ODOT urban paving program scheduled in fiscal year twenty twenty-five, so we want to get the water main replacement performed prior to the urban paving program. Again, that's a program where we share with ODOT in the cost of resurfacing state routes, so it's a benefit to the city to, uh, be involved in that program. There's existing four-inch, six-inch cast iron inductible iron pipe on Millville Avenue, and there's also an existing twelve-inch high-density polyethylene pipe. The four and six-inch pipe were installed in the nineteen fifties, the twelve-inch pipe was installed in early two thousand, but we're proposing to install new eight-inch ductile iron pipe, little over eleven hundred feet, and then also nearly, um, over forty-five hundred feet of twelve-inch ductile iron pipe. And this is the limits of that project. Any questions on this? Okay. Next project is a subdivision off of Columbia Road, Terry Lane, Terry Court, Ross Hill Drive, and Wildwood Court. The OPWC water main applica, or loan application would be for six hundred and ten thousand dollars, it's existing hu, six-inch high-density polyethylene pipe, it was installed in the mid-nineteen nineties, but we're having multiple pipe failures, in fact, I think we had one just a couple of days ago, and it's important that we get this project funded either through this loan program or through another method, we're meeting to evaluate that this week. We've been installing new eight-inch ductile iron pipe, and here's your, um, engineering hydraulic information for the evening, here's your lesson for the evening. So an eight-inch pipe is one-point-seven-five times larger than a six-inch pipe, which equates to a higher flow capability, and if you think about installing a six-inch pipe and an eight-inch pipe, there's not much difference in the installation, it's mostly in the material cost, and there's not much difference in material cost between the two. So it's our standard practice to install eight-inch pipe rather than six-inch pipe. If you ever look at a map of the city system, there's a lot of six-inch pipe in the city, so it's important that we continue to install the eight-inch pipe instead of six-inch in the future. And then this is a aerial of the, uh, proposed project limits. Lastly, the loan application would be for Williams Avenue Water Main Replacement, it would be a one-point-three million dollar application. There's existing two-inch steel pipe plus six-inch, eight-inch, and eighteen-inch cast iron pipe. The two-inch, six-inch, and eight-inch were installed in the early nineteen hundreds, the eighteen inch was, eighteen inch was installed in the nineteen fifties, and actually, the, that pipe is more problematic than the older nineteen hundreds pipe. We've had multiple water main breaks on the eighteen inch, we're proposing new, uh, eight-inch and sixteen-inch ductile iron pipe, thousand feet of eight-inch and one thousand three hundred and fifty feet of sixteen-inch, and here's an aerial of that. And I will, um, share this with you first thing in the morning, as I usually do, that I'll get that sent off to you so you can look at that information more closely. You have any questions?
Thank you, Rich, for getting as many interest-free loans as possible for us.
Well, there's still debt associated with the loan, so just, it's just going to be paying for what you borrow, that's all.
Save a dollar, earn a dollar.
Thank you.
Thanks, Rich.
Uh, next up, next up is number nine for the Hamilton Belt Line, uh, Trail Phase Three with Alan Messer.
Where is it? Where is it? Where is it? Alan, I'm looking for it, be one minute. This is embarrassing. There we go.
Do you have the remote?
Yes.
Okay, got it. All set, thank you.
Um, so, this is phase three of the Belt Line Trail, which runs, um, from Black Street Bridge down to the High Main Bridge, um, you can see that there in the aerial view. This is kind of what a section, so you can visualize it, would look like, a typical section on the right, um, along Spooky Nook, adjacent to the patio area, and then elsewhere, as you get over closer to the Main Street, um, would be just to the lower side of the levee. Um, this is, um, difficult to see, but these are the properties that are involved, there's fourteen properties that, um, need to be acquired for it, the bulk of those are city, Port Authority, or MCD properties, which we expect, um, and have had discussions about those being donations. Um, there's two private properties, Winston Controls and, uh, Hamilton Knife, that there's some work, uh, either temporary or permanent on them. Um, the, the notable expense here is that MCD is a maintenance garage that's right in the crosshairs of the trail, there's no going around it, so they are looking to relocate that probably to the east side of the river, um, somewhere near the end of Conservation Way, uh, we've been in discussion with them for quite a while about where that would be relocated, so they would be paid for that relocation for the actual expenses, and then I, I, um, expect, their board would have to approve it, but I expect the actual property to be a, a donation, and then also the, um, shed that the rowing club uses would have to be relocated, it's in the way as well. Um, that's just kind of, uh, laying it out for you, we back, you know, as we get, um, prices, um, for each of the properties, um, for the actual sale of those. I will say there are two properties that in the initial survey came up as unknown ownership, a lot of this land along the river is difficult to pin down as to who owned it, um, we believe that those properties are also owned by MCD, and there's a title search underway to approve that, um, if it doesn't show that they're owned by MCD and they continue to be unknown ownerships, what that would mean would be an appropriation, would have to be done on that property, because basically at that point, nobody or nobody known owns it, and the only way to get ownership of it is to go through the full appropriations or eminent domain, as it's often referred to. That's what I had, um, any questions on that?
Mr. Mayor?
Please.
So Alan, uh, behind Spooky Nook, do they own that, like where the patio is going to be, is that part of Spooky Nook?
So portions of it are the belt line that the city, the, the old Hamilton Belt Line that the city acquired, um, early in the trail process, portions of them are owned by the Port Authority.
Okay.
It's, it's a mix, they, the, the actual building itself is on a separate parcel from the open land.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Up next for item number ten, for the bond anticipation note, we have Dave Jones, our finance director.
Good evening, Mayor.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council, citizens of Hamilton. We're requesting council to authorize a bond anticipation note not to exceed $40 million. And first off, when we say not to exceed, you guys authorize the maximum amount. We can always borrow less. And bullet point number one, the first use to Criminal Justice Center at 30.5 million. We certainly hope to borrow less on that one. You guys have already authorized some ARPA funds for that. We've got a project manager working on that, and then hopefully we'll have more firm numbers in October, November. However, we hope to go to market with this in early October. The second bullet point is the second use, Tyler'sville Road, two and a half million dollars. The first two will be repaid by the general fund. Third bullet point, Stormwater, $3.7 million, repaid by the Stormwater Fund. And the fourth and final bullet point is $3.3 million repaid by the Wastewater Fund. The Ohio Revised Code does require that there's four separate ordinances for each one of those. And then there's a fifth ordinance that actually will combine those into, into one borrowing. So on the September fourteenth council meeting, we'll see five ordinances for this. So we decided to go the route of a bond anticipation, anticipation of a ban, which is a one-year note because of the current economic conditions, inflation, the rising interest rates, and it gives us a little flexibility. So come 2023, on the anniversary date or before, we can elect to roll this ban, pay the interest and roll this ban. If, you know, depending on what's going on with the economy, we can elect to go to public financing. Again, it just, it frees up some options. We're anticipating about a 3.25% interest rate on this, that's the coupon rate. We'll reevaluate next summer what our options are, what the economy's doing, what rates are doing. Again, we can roll it, we could do a permanent financing, we could do some short-term financing, but we can evaluate that next summer. This will be geo-debt. We're using the Ohio Market Access Program. It's a new program through the State Treasurer's Office. It's not a pooled program, but they do bring a lot of borrowers in the, in the same room, so to speak, and it reduces the, the local government cost. We're using Huntington Bank to underwrite it. Do you have any questions?
Mayor, I have a question. Dave, if we were going to go traditional financing versus the bond anticipation notes, let's say that we amortize this into a fixed rate over thirty years, how much higher would the interest rate would it be than the three and a quarter percent for the ban, based on what you've seen with current market conditions?
Maybe again, so all this is tax-free, tax-exempt, so you're probably getting up around four percent. I know a double A two went out at about three percent a couple of weeks ago. Our rating's a little lower than that, so I'm seeing a coupon of three-two-five on a one-year. I'm thinking maybe four, four and a half percent, but I don't have the exact number.
So the risk council's taking is by doing a ban, if interest rates continue to rise, then we're going to be forced into a series every year, rolling that ban over until we find a more favorable rate. I mean, it's likely that we may not see a more favorable rate than what we have today.
Yeah, but you can roll this for up to five years.
Okay.
As long as you make a principal paydown after three.
I think my point is, though, five years from now, interest rates could be a lot higher.
They could, there is interest rate risk, you're all right.
So in your discussions with our financial advisor, I mean, what is the risk in doing the ban versus just going into a, a permanent financing now?
Well, the risk is, right now, you're, you're facing high rates, and we expect rates to come down.
So they, they are saying that they think the rate, even now the Fed is talking about raising the Fed rate again.
Yeah, and they're talking about raising rates into 2023 even. So, you know, there is risk, but I think within the five years, and so does our financial advisor, that rates will come down, and we can see a better rate.
That was the point, I just wanted to make sure I understood that, thank you.
But we can reevaluate before the next meeting and then certainly come back to the table, whatever council's pleasure is. But right now, we expect to go to market in early October. Questions?
Questions?
A result of Joshua's question.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And the last item, item eleven, will be presented by Adam Helms, our Director of Resident Services.
Good evening. We've heard about some very large and exciting projects tonight. I'm here to talk to you about buying a used U-Haul truck. We'd like to, funds were allocated for a box truck. The truck we're looking to buy is $60,000, which is slightly above our threshold for doing informal bids. Our threshold is $50,000, so because it's slightly above that, I'm here tonight to tell you that we'd like to buy a box truck, used U-Haul for $60,000. Typically, a new truck would go anywhere from a hundred thousand to 200,000. We're looking to drive this around town. We don't have a box truck in the fleet. We're moving a bunch of furniture and stuff here at City Hall and all the other buildings we own. And Resident Services usually gets asked to help with the move, and this will be a lot more convenient than lining up a fleet of trailers.
Adam, what's the long-term use of the truck once all the moves are done?
Use it for a variety of purposes. We can use it for River's Edge, to transport. Quick Strike Team gets asked to move a variety, a variety of things. Number one, we had to remove the McCloskey murals from all over town, like that, that would have been a use for this. It's a good utility vehicle to have, we don't have one in the fleet now. Our storage area at River's Edge Amphitheater is essentially maxed out to the ceiling and to the walls, so this is rolling wheels for some River's Edge equipment as well.
Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Then that's it, Mr. Clerk, City Clerk, is that correct?
That's correct, sir.
Okay. I'll accept the motion, if you can make the whole be closed.
So moved.
Second.
Councilmember Nab, second by Councilmember Fear. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign. Hearing none, the, the whole is closed at seven twenty-one. I'll accept the motion, if the regular meeting be reconvened.
So moved.
Second.
Councilmember Fear, second by Councilmember Vaughn. Roll call vote on that motion, please.
Mohler.
Yes.
Pullman.
Yes.
Fear.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Nab.
Yes.
Lauer.
Yes.
Motion adopted, seven to zero.
Okay, I'll accept the motion regarding the Senate Agenda. Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Nab.
With the exception of the items so noted, council receive the reports of the consent agenda concurring the recommendations.
Second.
Councilmember Nab, second by Councilmember Pullman. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Hearing none, that motion is carried. We now go on to the public hearing section of the meeting. Now accept the motion, if the regular meeting be recessed and the public hearing take place.
So moved.
Second.
Councilmember Pullman, second by Councilmember Vaughn. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign. Hearing none, that motion is carried. And that motion is carried at seven twenty-two. I'm going to read the first public hearing into the record.
A public hearing regarding a major amendment to Plan Hamilton, the city's comprehensive plan by adding the Maple Avenue Corridor redevelopment plan to the comprehensive plan, City of Hamilton, Planning Department, applicant.
Anyone in the audience wish to be heard at this public hearing involving the Maple Avenue Corridor redevelopment plan? Anyone in the audience wish to be heard at this public hearing involving the Maple Avenue Corridor redevelopment plan? And I'm going to look at the book, see if anybody's signed the book. No one's signed the book. Okay, is there anyone on council wishes to make any kind of a comment or make a motion at this time?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Pullman.
Make a motion that the public hearing be closed. Second.
Councilmember Pullman, second by Vice Mayor Ryan. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Hearing none, that public hearing involving that particular topic is closed at seven twenty-three. Second public hearing, please.
A public hearing regarding amending certain sections of the City of Hamilton zoning ordinance, number seven-five-zero-three, related to amending ordinance sections one-two-five-zero, zoning land and use chart, section one-three-zero-zero, conditional uses, section one-four-zero-zero, accessory uses, section one-six-zero-zero, off-street parking and loading regulations, section one-seven-zero-zero, signs, section one-eight-zero-zero, residential design standards, section one-nine-zero-zero, commercial design standards, section two-zero-zero, district purpose statements, section three-nine-zero-zero, glossary, section one-four-one-zero-zero, Board of Zoning Appeals, section four-four-zero-zero, amendments, section four-five-zero-zero, fee schedule, City of Hamilton, applicant.
Anyone in the audience wish to be heard at this public hearing involving amending certain sections of the City of Hamilton zoning ordinance? Anyone in the audience wish to be heard at this public hearing involving amending parts of the, of our zoning ordinance? Anyone on council wish to be heard or wish to make a motion at this time?
Mr. Mayor.
Vice Mayor Ryan.
I move that the public hearing be closed.
Second.
Councilmember Ryan, second by Councilmember Fear. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Hearing none, that motion is carried. Public hearing is closed at seven twenty-five. I'll accept the motion, if the regular meeting be reconvened.
So moved.
Second.
Councilmember Fear, second by Vice Mayor Ryan. Roll call vote to reconvene the regular meeting.
Mohler.
Yes.
Pullman.
Yes.
Fear.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Nab.
Yes.
Lauer.
Yes.
Motion adopted, seven to zero.
Okay, regular meeting is reconvened at seven twenty-five. We now go to council actions pertaining to legislative items, and I'll accept the motion.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Pullman.
Make a motion, move that a note be made upon the minutes that each member of council was furnished a printed copy of each item of legislation prior to its being considered at this meeting.
Second. Councilmember Pullman, second by Vice Mayor Ryan. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Hearing none, that motion is carried. Now go to pending legislation, Agenda Item Number fourteen, second reading ordinance involving some traditional neighborhood zoning.
An ordinance amending the City of Hamilton zoning ordinance, number seven-five-zero-three, by changing the zoning of specific properties in the Lindenwald neighborhood to TN1, Traditional Neighborhood One District, TN2, Traditional Neighborhood Two District, TN3, Traditional Neighborhood Three District, and BPD, Business Plan Development District. Properties situated in the Sixth Ward, North Side and South, and South Side, City of Hamilton, City of Hamilton, applicant, second reading.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Vaughn.
I move the ordinance be adopted.
Second.
Councilmember Vaughn, second by Councilmember Lauer. Any discussion about this ordinance which goes into TN1, TN2, as well as Business Plan Development? Any discussion, hearing none, roll call vote?
Mohler.
Yes.
Pullman.
Yes.
Fear.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Nab.
Yes.
Lauer.
Yes.
Ordinance adopted, seven to zero.
Page to Agenda, Item Number fifteen, first reading of an ordinance involving low-speed for hire vehicles.
An ordinance amending and supplementing the codified ordinances of the City of Hamilton, Ohio by amending Part Three Traffic Code Title V vehicles by adding Chapter three forty-nine, Low Speed For Hire Vehicles relative to authorizing and regulating low-speed for hire vehicles in the City of Hamilton, Ohio, first reading.
Thank you, we go to Agenda Item Number sixteen, first reading ordinance involving our zoning ordinances.
An ordinance amending sections of the City of Hamilton zoning ordinance, zoning ordinance, section twelve fifty, zoning land use chart, section thirteen hundred, conditional uses, section fourteen hundred, accessory uses, section sixteen hundred, off-street parking and loading regulations, section seventeen hundred, signs, section eighteen hundred, residential design standards, section nineteen hundred, commercial design standards, section two thousand, district purpose statements, section twenty-eleven, twenty-twelve, twenty-thirteen, and twenty-fourteen, traditional neighborhood zoning districts, TN1, TN2, TN3, TN4, section thirty-nine hundred, glossary, section forty-one hundred, Board of Zoning Appeals, section forty-four hundred, amendments, and section forty-five hundred, fee schedule pertaining to the first round of 2022 zoning text amendments, City of Hamilton, applicant, first reading.
Thank you. Page to Agenda, Item Number seventeen, first reading ordinance involving the Maple Avenue Corridor redevelopment plan.
An ordinance approving a major amendment to Plan Hamilton, the city's comprehensive plan by adding the Maple Avenue Corridor redevelopment plan to the comprehensive plan, City of Hamilton, applicant, first reading.
Thank you, we go to Agenda, Item Number eighteen, first reading of an ordinance involving a grant to the Community Improvement Corporation.
An emergency ordinance affirming the designation of the Community Improvement Corporation of Hamilton, Hamilton, Ohio, as the city's agency for development in the city, and authorizing a grant in the amount not to exceed $270,000 to be made to the Community Improvement Corporation of Hamilton, Ohio, for public purposes and declaring an emergency, first reading.
Agenda Item Number nineteen, first reading of an ordinance involving certain real property located at 101 Knights Bridge.
An ordinance authorizing and directing the city manager to execute a purchase and sale agreement and related actions related to certain real property located at 101 Knights Bridge Drive, parcel number P six four six one zero zero three zero 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 one, Vora Technology Park LLC, property owner, City of Hamilton purchaser, first reading.
Here we go to Agenda, Item Number twenty, a resolution involving a lease agreement with Community First Solutions.
A resolution authorizing and directing the city manager to enter into a lease agreement with Community First Solutions for office space at the Community First Solutions Resource Center located at 230 Lovelot Street, Hamilton, Ohio, four-five-zero-one-one. Community First Solutions, lesser, City of Hamilton, less C.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Nab.
I move the resolution be adopted. Second.
Councilmember Nab, second by Vice Mayor Ryan. Comments on this one? Hearing none, roll call vote?
Mohler.
Yes.
Pullman.
Yes.
Fear.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Nab.
Yes.
Lauer.
Yes.
Resolution adopted, seven to zero.
We go to Agenda, Item Number twenty-one, which is a resolution involving a lease agreement with 312 North Second Street LLC.
A resolution authorizing and directing the city manager to enter into a lease agreement with 312 North Second Street LLC for office space at 2 South Third Street, Hamilton, Ohio, four-five-zero-one-one. 312 North Second Street LLC, lesser, City of Hamilton, less C.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Pullman.
Make a motion that the resolution be adopted.
Second.
Councilmember Pullman, second by Councilmember Vaughn. Discussion about this one? Hearing none, roll call vote?
Mohler.
Yes.
Pullman.
Yes.
Fear.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Nab.
Yes.
Lauer.
Yes.
Resolution adopted, seven to zero.
Okay. We go to Agenda, Item Number twenty-two. You'll read that into the record, please. Does it have to be read into the record first?
You, you can have it read into the record before the motion.
A resolution of intent to appropriate a fee simple interest in eight parcels of, of real property located at the northwest corner of the intersection of South Seventh Street and Hanover Street in the City of Hamilton for the purpose, for the public purpose of constructing parking improvements, serving municipal police and municipal court facilities, Criminal Justice Campus.
Is there a motion on this, Mr. Mayor? Vice Mayor Ryan.
I'd like to make a motion postpone this item to the next regularly scheduled council meeting.
Second.
Okay, so there's a motion to table, is that correct then? Okay, there's a motion to table by Vice Mayor Ryan, second by Councilmember Fear. Is there a roll call vote on that motion to table? I mean, there's a roll call vote, so a roll call vote, please.
Okay, Mohler.
Yes.
Pullman.
Yes.
Fear.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Nab.
Yes.
Lauer.
Yes.
That motion to table is adopted, seven to zero.
Thank you, we go to Agenda, Item Number twenty-three, which is a resolution involving liquor permit on Dayton Street.
A resolution withdrawing the objection to the new D-one, D-two, D-three-A, and D-six liquor permits to Rocky Fields LLC doing business as Dayton Lane Pub located at 1103 Dayton Street, Hamilton, Ohio, four-five-zero-one-one.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Lauer.
I'd like to make a motion that the resolution be adopted.
Second.
Councilmember Lauer, seconded by Vice Mayor Ryan. Any discussion on this one? Hearing none, roll call?
Mohler.
Yes.
Pullman.
Yes.
Fear.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Nab.
Yes.
Lauer.
Yes.
Resolution adopted, seven to zero.
We go to Agenda, Item Number twenty-four, which is a resolution involving another liquor permit.
A resolution objecting to the transfer of a D-five liquor permit from Jaden Entertainment LLC and Patio, one, one thousand two Harmon Avenue, excuse me, 1,002 Avenue, Harmon Avenue, first floor and basement, Hamilton, Ohio, four-five-zero-one-one, to CND Entertainment LLC at 1,002 Harmon Avenue, Hamilton, Ohio, four-five-zero-one-one, and directing the city clerk to request a hearing to determine whether such liquor permit request shall be denied.
Mayor.
Councilmember Nab.
I move the resolution be adopted. Second.
Councilmember Nab, second by Vice Mayor Ryan. Discussion? Hearing none, roll call?
Mohler.
Yes.
Pullman.
Yes.
Fear.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Nab.
Yes.
Lauer.
Yes.
Resolution adopted, seven to zero.
We go to Agenda, Item Number twenty-five, which is a resolution?
A resolution declaring Butch Hubble Junior Street as the honorary name for section of Hanover Street.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor.
Now who went first over here?
Ladies first.
Oh, okay then.
Okay.
I move the resolution be adopted.
Fear.
I'll second it.
My council member Fear, seconded by council member Pullman. Any discussion about this? Everybody who knew Butch Hubble knows that he gave a lot to this city and it's an appropriate way to recognize him, his memory, and it's a good honorary naming of the street. Anybody else? A roll call vote then?
Mohler.
Yes.
Pullman.
Yes.
Fear.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Nab.
Yes.
Lauer.
Yes.
Resolution adopted. Seven to zero.
We go to agenda item number 26, which is a resolution involving the, of a grant application.
A resolution authorizing and directing, and authorizing, directing, and supporting the filing of a grant application with Interact for Health relative to the startup of a tobacco retail license program.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Pullman. Make a motion that the resolution be adopted.
Second.
My council member Pullman, second by vice mayor Ryan. Any discussion on this one? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Mohler.
Yes.
Pullman.
Yes.
Fear.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Nab.
Yes.
Lauer.
Yes.
Resolution adopted. Seven to zero.
We go to agenda item number 27. Resolution involving a side lot.
A resolution approving the conveyance of certain real property located within the City of Hamilton, Ohio's urban renewal area to adjoining property owner as a side lot, 173 Walnut Street.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Vaughn.
I move the resolution be adopted. Second.
My council member Vaughn, second by council member Fear. Any discussion on this one?
Mayor. Again, I, I think it speaks volumes to the dispersment of property that has been vacated and improperly taken care of, that the homeowners in, in the community, this one this evening at 173 Walnut Street are willing to take care of their property and enjoy it to their own home and things like that. So my time in service now on the, on Butler County Land Bank, we were in session on Monday, as most of you know, and discussed how important the, this side lot program is and how Hamiltonians have taken ownership of this, of this property and, and things that enjoy their homes. So again, glad to see this on the, on the agenda tonight. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Any other comments? Hearing none. Roll call vote.
Mohler.
Yes.
Pullman.
Yes.
Fear.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Nab.
Yes.
Lauer.
Yes.
Resolution adopted. Seven to zero.
Go to agenda item number 28. A resolution also involving a side lot.
A resolution approving the lease of certain real property acquired through the Land Bank to an adjoining property owner as a side lot, 629 Lovelace Street.
Mr. Mayor.
Vice mayor Ryan.
I move that the resolution be adopted.
Second.
My vice mayor Ryan, second by council member Pullman. Any discussion on this one? Hearing none. Roll call.
Mohler.
Yes.
Pullman.
Yes.
Fear.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Nab.
Yes.
Lauer.
Yes.
Resolution adopted. Seven to zero.
We now go to agenda item number 29, which is a resolution involving a lease of property to New Life Mission.
A resolution approving the lease of certain real property located within the City of Hamilton, Ohio's urban renewal area to New Life Mission Incorporated for the purpose of the Hamilton Clean Compost Campaign, 404 South Fourth Street and 413 Sycamore Street.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Vaughn.
I move the resolution be adopted.
Second.
My council member Vaughn, second by vice mayor Ryan. Any comments or discussion on this? This area is, is being developed, kind of neat with a pollinator and a park and now a clean compost. I mean, folks like Jeff Gamble and other volunteers have done a nice job of doing something with this, with this property. Any other comments or discussion? Hearing none. Roll call.
Mohler.
Yes.
Pullman.
Yes.
Fear.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Nab.
Yes.
Lauer.
Yes.
Resolution adopted. Seven to zero.
Audience to city manager.